Thank you so much for coming out tonight. We're so, so excited that you're here. And I know I can say on behalf of the campaign, thank you so much for taking the step to come out and join us today and take the initiative to come hear Rob speak. It really does make all the difference. And I'm up here because I want to give you guys a pitch as to why you should take the next step and now help us spread the news about Rob to other people throughout Henry County and Mount Pleasant. Knocking doors and talking to voters face to face is the most impactful way to change voters' minds and help them, you know, open their eyes and convince them to vote for him. It is the number one most effective way. So please help, help us do that, right? We're knocking doors. We're going to be knocking doors throughout all of Iowa, the state of Iowa throughout the month of October, and we need your help. You can come find us at the table afterwards. You should also sign a petition over at the table if you haven't already. You can do that right over here by Francis. There you go. And yeah, we really, really would love your help at the doors. It does make all the difference in the world, especially this upcoming month as we're about to launch our campaigning effort. If you're afraid of knocking doors, you can make calls. And if you're afraid of making calls, you can send texts. I promise you, there is a way for you to help, and we will utilize you in some capacity. If you want to be a part of this movement, this is the way to get involved. So that is my pitch for you. And now I'm going to turn it over to the man of the hour. Please help me welcome the next governor of the state of Iowa.
How are you doing today? Good. Thanks for being here, Henry County. Good to see you. I like to have a cordless microphone. Now I've got a leash. It's a dangerous thing. We'll see how it goes. I want to start right here. There's one word that I think describes our political system today: broken.
Yes.
This isn't complicated. Politicians know that we only have two choices on the ballot. Solving problems is incredibly hard. But because we only got one other option, they could just convince us that the only other option is worse, and then they get to get reelected even if they haven't solved their problems. Fair description?
Yep.
And I'm going to be honest with you. We have seen both the Democratic and the Republican parties, at least out in DC, recently have total control. And you know what? Nobody's out there solving very many problems, not from either party. My proposal is this: not redder or bluer, but better and truer.
Yes.
It's pretty simple. I don't want to have to choose between two options. I think that every one of us is capable of thinking slightly more deeply about this. If you, I know, can also choose for more than two options because you are able to survive a trip to the toothpaste aisle. If you can get in and out of the toothpaste aisle and make a choice that you feel satisfied with, I'm sure that you can handle a few more realistic options on your ballot. Now, does anybody so far disagree with anything that I have said? Then why is it that we don't always talk about this? This is the number one thing that defines every single problem that we face. More of our problems would be solved if we had a system where we could hold politicians accountable for their failure to solve our problems rather than feeling trapped into re-electing them. Right? So, that involves changing our political system, which we can do. Iowa has had a tradition of doing this and of being among the first to institute reforms, to tell politicians, you know what? We don't trust you that much. We were the first state to do a nonpartisan redistricting commission, first state to do a merit-based judicial selection system. We should be among the first states to say, you know what, Democratic and Republican parties? You don't deserve special legal privileges on our ballot anymore. We, the people, are going to be in charge of our elections, not two political parties. Period. But if we're going to change our political system, we're going to have to change our political culture. That's why we're doing this today. That's what this is about. That's why we announced all 100 town halls all at the same time and told everybody that we're coming. Because we actually want everybody to turn out. I know that's unusual for a politician, but yes, I actually do want to talk to the people who have a chance to vote for me or against me. Right? So the way we're going to do that here is by doing something pretty straightforward. I'm going to ask you a couple of questions. If, when I ask the question, you should raise your hand if you're being honest, please do be honest. I promise you, we're going to clap for you. It's not a trap. So please raise your hand if you're a registered Republican here today. All right, thank you all for being here. Please raise your hand if you're a registered independent voter, if you're here today. All right, thank you all for being here. And we always want to be fair, so let's clap for the Democrats too, okay? And then just to point out to all the people that are in powerful positions in both parties that want us to be mad at each other and want us to not get along and want the people that we love to turn into people that we hate, let's do something where we all do something together to make something wonderful. Let's sing the first verse of America the Beautiful. It starts, "Oh, beautiful for spacious skies." I have the microphone, but I will not kick us off. Anyone who can hit a note, pick a note and hit it?
Beautiful for spacious skies, for amber waves of grain, for purple mountains majesties above the fruited plains. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, and crown thy good with brotherhood from sea to shining sea.
Great to get the harmony there. Thank you. Does anybody feel better about the future now? Great, good. Then, I'm done. See ya. Thanks for coming. Have a good night. Look, so we're in mixed company. We're going to ask people to ask questions no matter what their political affiliation is. If somebody asks a question that you think is a weird question or they use words that you think are weird, just be nice. I want you to just remember something that Walt Whitman wrote. And I know that he wrote it because they said so in the TV show Ted Lasso. Walt Whitman wrote, "Be curious, not judgmental." If somebody says something that your brain wants to go, "Hmm," just try "Hmm" instead. It'll work better for everyone involved, I promise. So my name's Rob Sand. I was born and raised in Decorah, Iowa. Dad's family has been there in Winneshie County since we got off the boat from Norway. Wife is Christine from Dennison and then Gilbert, Danish, so it's a mixed marriage. But so far, so good. Two boys. Axel is nine, Tate's 11. That means no diapers, no naps, no teenagers. We are loving every minute of it. The trifecta. The eye of the storm, right? Yeah. When I was growing up in Decorah, my dad would take me hunting and fishing, and the whole family would be in church on Sundays. Some folks in this state want to convince you that those things belong to a political party. I think we all know better than that. My aunt does religious artwork. My uncle is a pastor. Axel actually has his name, our younger boy, because when my wife suggested it, I finally did something smart. I thought, that's a terrible name, and I kept my mouth shut. And for once, actually, I was curious and not judgmental. Actually, I have to say, I was judgmental, but I kept my judgment to myself. Also something we're capable of doing. It can be good. And instead, I let my curiosity out a little bit. And I thought, well, I wonder what that name means. So I looked it up in our big book of Scandinavian names, because that's what we were using. And it said, "Father of Peace." And immediately, I thought of the Sermon on the Mount. Blessed are the peacemakers, for they will be called children of God. We could use some more peacemakers, couldn't we? And so his name's Axel. These are all important parts of my life. They have been my whole life. They still are today. We need peacemakers in this world right now. When I registered to vote, I didn't register with a party. I know I'm in a room that's mostly Democrats. I'm still going to say it. I don't like political parties. We're supposed to decide what we think based on figuring out what the truth is and then doing the right thing. That's what our parents teach us. That's what we teach our kids. Right? We don't teach them, "Be redder or be bluer." We teach them, "Be better, be truer." And so I registered independent. Now, I realized very soon after that, in order to vote in a primary, I had to register with a party, didn't I? None of you are ever going to convince me that that's okay. That's wrong. It's wrong. Independent voters are equal members of our society. If we truly think they're equal, if the Constitution truly protects their equality, if their tax dollars going to pay for elections should allow them to participate, then we should let them vote too. Period. That said, I'm practical. I registered with a party because I wanted to maximize my impact. Why did I vote? Why did I register with the Democratic Party? Because of my faith. I think my faith is about being for the little guy. And I think the Democratic Party at its best is about sticking up for the little guy. You can disagree with me on that. We can still be friends. I also registered as a Democrat because at the time, there was a president who was a Democrat, who had balanced the budget and used the surplus to pay down the debt. You can disagree with me about that too, but you'd be wrong. Because that's just a fact. All right? You can argue with me about, well, you know, it took a Republican Congress to get him to do it. He wouldn't have done it otherwise. And you'd have a point there, right? Maybe you would, maybe you wouldn't. How many angels could dance on the head of a pin? Right? It happened, and he was in charge. And I was a kid watching him do it. And I was thinking, thanks. Because my parents had given me a loan for a mountain bike. And every morning when I opened up the cereal cabinet, there was that sheet of paper staring me in the face telling me how much money I owed them. So I learned real quick, debt is not fun. That said, when I registered as a Democrat, I did not leave my independent mind behind. I have said things in the course of this campaign, despite us being well ahead of a primary date, that I believe, that also have upset a lot of people in my own party. I'm going to tell you what I think. I'm not going to pretend I think something else. I'm not going to do it. If you want people who are going to lie to you and tell you what you think, there's plenty of them out there. It's not going to happen here. I'm telling you what I think because I think we need more of that and less lying. When I... Thanks. When I finished my education, I went to work at the Attorney General's office. At the Attorney General's office, I prosecuted most of the public corruption in the state of Iowa and a lot of violent crime as well. A lot of abuse cases, murder, attempted murder, bank robbery. The Iowa Film Office Tax Credit Scandal, if you remember that case. Those cases, I should say. A bunch of people getting paid millions of dollars of your tax dollars that they weren't owed. We went after them. The largest lottery winning scheme in American history. I ran the investigation that uncovered it and the prosecution that held the conspirators accountable for it. If you like reading books, I wrote a book about it. It's called The Winning Ticket. It's great. You should buy it. You shouldn't take my word for it, though. But you don't have to. The Washington Independent Review of Books said it was a favorite read of the year when it came out. If you're not the book-reading type, there's a documentary. That one's called Jackpot. You can stream it for free at lotodoc.com. L-O-T-T-O-D-O-C dot com. I also hit the point where I realized, when you're a prosecutor, everything you do all day long, if you're just prosecuting crime, is thinking about the worst things that human beings do to each other on our planet. That's it. That's the only thing you're thinking about. It has a way of weighing you down a little bit, darkening your view of the world. And I noticed that. My view of the world was getting a little darker. I thought, well, what can I do to make me do something that's a little bit more proactive? Make me feel a little bit better? I'd had this experience in high school, my junior, my senior year, where I got a skate park built in Decorah. I know that makes it sound like a curveball because it said hunting and fishing and church. But you're in Mount Pleasant. You know that in a small town, you can do everything, can't you? And so my friends and I were skateboarders, and we kept getting kicked out of all the places where people told us we could skate. And so eventually, we said, well, we should just have a skate park. And you know what? We worked with people who weren't particularly happy with us. And it was when we came together that we solved the problems. I'm talking about people who were property owners, who didn't want skateboarders on their property. Right? As it turns out, when people who think differently work together, that's good, actually, not bad. Lots of leaders in political parties want to tell you that, oh, you can't let anybody in. Don't let them do it, right? It's because it's great for them if they have all the power. It's not working great for the rest of us. So I thought, well, what could I do that would be more proactive? Solving a problem, moving us forward like that. I had worked with the Auditor's Office because they knew Iowa's public corruption investigations. Right? Those investigations would land on my desk for me to decide who to charge and for what. And so I went ahead and I thought, well, I've noticed over the years that sometimes their investigations didn't work well in court. Again, not because the folks in that office were foolish or making mistakes. They were all accountants and CPAs, every one of them. Well, accountants and CPAs aren't familiar with the rules of courtroom. And so every once in a while, they'd structure... I'll get into detail for you. They'd structure the investigation in a way where they're making reasonable assumptions. But the only thing a prosecutor does with assumptions in court is lose. We've got to prove everything beyond a reasonable doubt. So I thought, well, I could run for state auditor. I could fix that problem. That would be good for the state. We'd have fewer of these issues, more accountability. I also thought, just one thing doesn't seem like a good enough reason. And so I thought that I should do something that I have always done in my life. I'm going to be honest with you. Some of you will like me more after I say this. Others will like you less. It's just who I am. I did my homework. I read Chapter 11 of the Iowa Code. I actually read it three times. It's the one that says auditor of state because I wanted to know, what does this office do? As I read it, I found something very exciting to me. No one has ever told you that before, nor will anyone ever again. If you want to sleep tonight and you're having trouble, Chapter 11 of the Iowa Code, highly recommend it. But I'm reading it, and I find that it has this tremendous capacity to promote government efficiency. And I knew they weren't doing it. I want to be state auditor. We'll build a skate park right in there. It'll be a government efficiency program. Make things work better for people. Simple as that. So I ran in 2018, and I wanted, and we did that. It's called PI, Public Innovations and efficiencies. It is a very simple program. We have pages and pages of things that cities, counties, and school districts can do to save money. We have over 500 participating local entities every year. It's been copied in two other states because it's so good at saving money. And we have a pie contest every year where we give the best performers pie. So it's not just a good way to save money for taxpayers. It's also a great way for me to eat more dessert. We also, in my first term, changed the rules so that people in... who work in the Auditor's Office can literally live anywhere they want in the state of Iowa, anywhere. Why did we do that? Because I grew up in Decorah. And I remember the conversations that would happen when a family left town or when a family moved to town. Previously, it was the only places that you could live were Iowa City, Ames, and Des Moines. Do you know of three places in Iowa that don't have to worry where they're going to be in 15 years? Iowa City, Ames, and Des Moines. Small towns live and die by the single family that moves in or moves out. And I thought, well, why are we doing this? We already audited 99 counties. Let's let people live wherever they want. So now they do. And I have to ask, is Drew here? I think, don't you still have a CPA in town, Drew? Does anybody know her? And do you know her story? She used to work in the Auditor's Office. She was the very first person to take us up on the offer to move somewhere else. Because I think she grew up here, didn't she? I think. Did somebody say yes? So she came into my office someday pretty soon after we announced the new rule. She was like, are you serious? I was like, yes, please. We've been wanting to move back to Mount Pleasant. We couldn't because, you know, it's hard to make a move, find a job, chicken and egg, right? We're going to move to Mount Pleasant. I said, great. And my understanding is, and please tell me if I'm wrong, I know she moved here. My recollection is, after she moved here, a local CPA owner, firm, actually had her take over the firm because he wanted to retire, was my recollection. Anybody?
She's in Fairfield.
She's in Fairfield?
Yep.
Okay.
She lives here.
She does here. Okay, great. Tell her hi. The reason I'm making this a conversation is because I don't want to go tell this story unless I'm telling a true story. But she's still down here. She left the state Auditor's Office, but she was able to help a local firm because... or at least an area firm because she was able to move down here first, right? Pretty straightforward. We also, I took a personal lonely stand against your tax dollars getting used to pay for the most egregious wrongdoing by public employees, by really by government insiders. There is a law in the state of Iowa that makes sense that says if someone who's in public employment does something wrong on the job, that it'll get covered. Right? So if a snowplow driver clips a parked car because they're not paying attention, the state makes the driver of that... the owner of that car whole. Fair? Hopefully, if that happens a second time, the snowplow driver is no longer a snowplow driver. But accidents happen. But there's another law in the state of Iowa that says, however, if the person that did that, if their behavior was willful and wanton... Let's say they're driving down the side of the road as the snowplow driver literally trying to hit these cars. That the state of Iowa can go after them and hold them personally accountable for it rather than having taxpayers foot the entire bill. Sounds like personal responsibility to me. I like that idea. How do we make people behave responsibly? By holding them accountable for their own actions. Dave Jamison ran the Iowa Finance Authority and harassed women that he worked with so bad that we paid $4 million to the targets of his harassment. It was not just his case. His was the worst, but there were other ones too. And I said, well, are we going to make Dave Jamison pay for this? He's got IFRS. He's maxed out. Over the course of his retirement, we are probably going to pay him over $1 million out of his pension on top of the $4 billion that we already paid. Nobody in Des Moines would say, yeah, let's use that law. Instead, I got excuses. Well, we're just not sure what to do. We haven't used that law before. Maybe we should start. Maybe if we had started 10 years ago, Dave Jamison never would have done all of this, right? Because he would have understood it's bad. And he would have been held accountable for it. Well, we don't want to discourage people from entering public service. Some people we do, actually. Some people we do. Nobody would go along with that. And I know when you're voting on who to send to Des Moines or DC, you're just... One of those questions is always, what are you going to do when you get there? And everybody tells you, well, this is the way we've always done it. And you know better. I just gave you my answer. It won't change if I'm your governor. I'm going to stick up for you, even if it means that people who are sitting in the room with me are angry with me. We also uncovered a record amount of misspent money, a record amount, in my first term. How did we do that? Different people who think differently working together. We all know this. How do we know this? Because we have jobs. We have spouses. Right? In politics, they want to pretend it's not true. No, the first thing I did, I made an independent and a Republican who had actually made contributions to my opponent's campaign in 2018. I made them the two deputies of the two divisions we have, the highest positions in the office, two people who had opposed my election. Now, people who love politics go, Sand, you dummy. That's not how this works. You're supposed to punish people who oppose you. That's how you get what you want. You've got to make them scared of you. That's how you'll collect more power. I have two answers to that. Number one, who's ever going to be scared of me? Look at this face. I'm 43, I swear. Number two, more seriously, what if I don't want to do politics? What if power isn't the primary pursuit? What if it's public service? What if it's having a state auditor's office that everybody in the state could look at and say, they've got people from all kinds of political stripes and senior leadership because they're trying to actually bring all of us together and do the right thing. Right? When that's your aim, then you look at the people who oppose you and you say, "Hey, come on board. The election's over. I won." I'd like a broken clock like you around. Just because you're right twice a day and every once in a while, almost, I am almost slightly incorrect, right? And so we did that. We uncovered a record amount of misspent money by working together. What was the response in Des Moines? Well, actually, let's back up. What was the response from all of you? We got reelected. Democrats, independents, and Republicans worked together to reelect the state auditor. We had the same team. They said, "Keep going." What was the response in Des Moines? They literally passed a law to make it so that state agencies and departments can hide wrongdoing from the auditor's office. There's eight different categories of documents that the Iowa State Auditor's Office is no longer supposed to have access to. Every single watchdog in America, Democrat, independent, and Republican that weighed in on this said, "This will lead to an increase in waste, fraud, and abuse. It's a terrible idea." Even independent auditing and accounting organizations weighed in on it. They said the same thing. Even the entity that writes the auditing standards that every single auditing... Every single audit, public or private, in this country uses. They said, "Don't do this. Bad idea." But you know this. I don't need to tell you. The experts said it, right? You're driving around. You look in the rearview mirror. There's a police officer behind you. Where do your eyes go next?
Speedometer.
Speedometer, that's right. One guy one time said beer can. He has the same instinct. He's just operating at a different level than the rest of us. I hope everybody's alright. Now, if you had a rule that said, "No law enforcement allowed to patrol on county roads in Henry County", what do we think is going to happen on county roads? Everything terrible. Anything you wanna do that's bad, take it to a county road. This is what they've done with the auditor's office. No more, "Leave me not into temptation." It's just, "Nope, here you go. Plenty of temptation. Have at it." This is bonkers. There's no good argument for it. What have we gotten out of this? An economy that is in forty-ninth place in America. Personal income growth that is in forty-eighth place in America. Both of those numbers are according to the Trump administration. We have the number-one growth rate for cancer. We have the number-two incident of cancer overall. We have an education system that is just in the middle of the pack. We were the crown jewel of this entire country. We put it on our corner. What do we tell our kids now when they ask mom, dad, grandma, grandpa? Why does it say "Foundation and Education" on the Iowa quarter? I would say, "We used to be good, didn't we?" That's not good enough. Meanwhile, in Des Moines, they're figuring out, hey, how do we hide the money that we're gonna misspend from the auditor's office? Right? Folks, we know what happened here. This is ten years of one-party control. Ten years of one-party control. If you're sitting there thinking, "That's right, Rob. We just need the other party to have ten years of one-party control," you're misunderstanding me. If you think that's the case, please visit California or New York. They have problems there. Some of those problems are different because of the differences in the parties, but some of those are the same because of the commonality of human nature. When you leave too few people with too much power for too long, power corrupts, and absolute power...
Corrupt, absolutely.
And here we are, and in Iowa, we can add, and it takes ten years. It reminds me of one of the stories from the New Testament that always stuck out the most to me. The story really, the message, right? It's about love and forgiveness, right? Love your neighbor, heal the sick, care for the poor, clothe the naked, turn the other cheek, love your enemy. Jesus, normally, a super-nice guy, the nicest. But he got really mad once, and it stuck out to me my whole life because he got mad. Well, he can get mad. Yes, he can. He saw money changers at the temple abusing a position of power and trust and privilege. Not serving regular people, but serving their own ends despite the position, the high position that they had been given, and he got mad. He flipped their tables over and sent them packing. There are tables in Des Moines that need flipping right now. I want your help. That's life. Happy to answer questions. Just raise your hand and we'll give you a microphone if we can. If not, you can just say it and I'll repeat it. Yes, over here.
Hey, so here in Mount Pleasant, we have one of the oldest universities in the state, the oldest, Iowa Wesleyan, and it closed several years ago. We see K-12 school districts with declining enrollment. We see decreasing federal support for our community colleges for K-12. How are you going to ensure that we, once again, become the best in education when we have all these factors going against us?
Yeah, that is a great question. And it's really well put because it's recognizing the challenges that are in front of us right now, right? Can I add to those challenges? A nine-hundred-billion-dollar budget deficit in the state of Iowa. That is a record, ladies and gentlemen, from people who campaigned on the idea that the deficit that we had in the Great Recession in 2008, 2009 was too big and needed to throw people out. Well, at least there was a Great Recession in that point nationwide. Here, they just did it. What other challenges do we have in front of us? More cuts coming from the federal level because of the big, beautiful bill. It is going to be a very hard time, budget-wise, for the state of Iowa over the next few years. But I'll tell you this. The first thing you do when you're in a hole is just stop digging. We are not gonna solve the problem with the same folks who created the problem. What will I do? Let me be honest about this too, right? I told you earlier, if you want someone who's just gonna tell you everything you wanna hear, you can find those people out here doing this kind of thing all the time. If I get elected to be governor of the state of Iowa, I will be working with a Republican legislature, okay? If that is news to you, wake up. They've got a supermajority in the Iowa House. They don't have a supermajority in the Iowa Senate by one seat. What I want, I won't get. What they want, they won't get. We're gonna actually have to have, we've been talking about this, different people who think differently working together. That will be good. What would I like to do? I'd like to increase funding in public education. One thing I'd like to do is take the money that we are giving to the wealthiest Iowans who are already sending their kids to private school anyway. And we've got to find this public education, preferably universal pre-K, which we still don't have in the state of Iowa. And it's a no-brainer. Every dollar you put in, you reduce seventeen dollars in future spending for that kid's life because they are more likely to graduate from high school, less likely to commit a crime, et cetera, et cetera, right? So those early investments make a big difference. That's a little bit of my wish list, a little bit of reality. It's gonna be tough. Who else has got a question? In the way back, standing up. Oh, okay.
I have a son with special needs, and he's on Medicaid. What is the future of Medicaid in Iowa right now?
There's a really simple fix. Unlike things where we have to balance, Governor Branston privatized Medicaid by executive order. I will unprivatize it by executive order. I know I just got you to clap for me and so I could stop talking, right? But I think that facts are important. I think that most Iowans care about facts, and so I'm going to share a couple of facts, even though we just talked about that. We looked at the rate... Let me start here. We talked about Iowa's pride and doing a good job of reforming government. Iowa had the Iowa Medicaid enterprise. We looked at what private companies were doing when they took over for running Medicaid in other states, and we just said, "Well, we can just do that through state government." And so we started implementing a lot of their efficiency practices and started saving money. Then Governor Branston tried to privatize Medicaid more quickly than it had ever been done anywhere else in America. They slowed him down, but it still went very, very quickly. I don't think that the MCOs that bid to be our MCOs understood that we had already trimmed the fat. So they came in and they figured out, "Oh, boy, we can't put our usual stuff to practice here. It's already going on." Well, how are we gonna make any money? And so they did this. They started denying care to people who were owed care. We looked at the number of illegal denials of care before and after Medicaid. Using the numbers that the Reynolds administration preferred we use in our analysis, they went up, those illegal denials of care went up by five hundred percent. Five hundred percent. Do we have anybody here who works at the hospital? Right? Talk to your folks who are at the hospital who know what the accounts look like. Most hospitals in the state of Iowa have literally had to take out a line of credit to continue to operate because the bills get paid by the MCOs so slowly. They do that because the longer they hold that money, the more money they make. Yes?
Originally, in Keokah, they're closed. And they're not coming back open because it's such a poor area.
Yeah.
So that's another...
And so many of those folks were dependent on the program, right? So this has been both bad for families who are in the program or have kids with special needs. It's also just been bad for taxpayers. Because when they pay that slowly, those costs go up. Other healthcare providers are hiring people who are not in any way related to healthcare, but administrators, to help get the bills paid. That means their salary is getting paid by all of you. So your costs are going up. It's been a disaster for the state of Iowa. I would reverse it.
Hi.
Howdy.
My voice is loud. So first, I wanna say, you can all be so proud of yourselves for being here.
Amen.
My question is, what is your plan, once you're elected, to work with city mayors and city governments to improve the status of those cities? Because we, in Mount Pleasant, our city is in decline. And we share that with a number of other cities. But city government is in charge of that, right? But it also has to do with the state and having people from the state, like the governor. When you're governor, what is your plan to work with city mayors and city governments?
Yeah, great question. I'd like to listen for a change. And I'd like to protect home rule under the Iowa Constitution, what is supposed to give counties and cities their ability to solve their own problems. Now, this is one of those things where we associate Democrats with liking big government. I tend to actually disagree. I think that the government that governs best is the one that governs most locally, closest to the people that it represents. Why? Because you can find your county attorney if you got a problem. It's hard to find me in Des Moines. It's a long ways away. It's even harder to find people in DC. And do you know what? I think when you actually have to look at people more often that you're representing, where you're making decisions that are gonna impact your life, you're going to do fewer, obviously, wrong things. That's why we don't get to do this very often in Iowa anymore. Because the people who are out there in DC know they are making decisions that hurt the people they represent. And so they don't wanna do this. Because they don't wanna hear them. They don't wanna hear it. They don't wanna hear it because they don't wanna confront it. They wanna continue to tell themselves, "Oh, I'm just doing... I'm just doing what I need to do to get by. It's not about you. It's about these people." Mayors, county officials, will have in me an ally that they have been lacking in Iowa for ten years, in Des Moines. They will have someone who says, "We are not going to put unfunded mandates on cities and counties." They have someone who's going to say, "We are not going to preempt the things that you want to do," right? Give the people who are most local, who are closest to each individual problem, who know their problem the best, the freedom to solve that problem and even the support to do it. That would be a big change that would go a long way.
That's fantastic.
Thank you. Yes?
We're down a mic, so...
Oh, all right. Yes, ma'am?
My question is about water quality.
Yes.
And what you see in the next three years after you're elected. But one of the problems is, the University of Iowa has had seventy-five centers checking on the problem because you can't find it, you can't fix the problem without knowing the problem. Which then, this year, they took it down to sixty-five centers. And next year, we're going down to zero from the university. The Red Center are all federal. And all the ones in southeast Iowa is from the university.
Yeah.
Is there funding?
So, nine-hundred-million-dollar budget deficit, right? But this, you took some of the points that I usually make when I talk about this because you're exactly right. What I typically say is, we've... There is a system of five hundred water quality monitors that has been defunded. My understanding on the nitrate monitors is it went from eighty down to twenty. Do you know what that tells you? It tells you, number one, that they probably know that there's a water quality problem because they're deciding to stop funding our ability to learn about what's going on. And then, number two, their preference for how to solve the water quality problem is to bury your head in the sand. They don't want you to know that we have an issue. We do. We have a water quality problem in the state of Iowa, okay? It blows my mind that despite everything that we're reading, that might be a dividing line in this campaign. I would hope that we could all agree to that, but legislative leaders have been quoted as saying, "Oh, we don't think so. We don't think there's anything that we need to do differently." Crazy. I just think that's wrong, right?
Harry.
I thought, "Oh, we got a microphone back. All right." So what do we do? Number one, I'm not, I do not think that we should be just blaming agriculture and being mad at agriculture. Why? Are most of those nitrates, at least, coming from farms? Yes, but farmers are signing up for conservation programs and being denied funding. The conservation programs that we have, farmers are putting in hours to prepare materials and put together a plan and say, "This is what I'll do if you fund me." But politicians aren't funding the programs. A survey just came out. Large majorities of farmers recognize that we have an issue and want to do a better job. So we should be working with them. The question here is, how do we make, put a plan together that is both effective and achievable, okay? And in politics, to be clear, you can always, this is one of those issues that's complicated. There's lots of issues where you stand is just sort of how you feel about it. Reproductive freedom is a common one, right? Water quality is much more complicated than that. It has to do with hydrology. It has to do with the fact that nitrate, right, attaches to water, but phosphorus only to soil. And then, there's, if you're talking about health impacts, well, there's causation and correlation. Are they both present? Present? If so, which direction is it going, right? This is complicated stuff. In politics, on any issue, you can always take a plan off of a shelf that somebody else wrote and wave it around and say, "Here's my plan." If you wanna have an answer for every single question all the time. But then they'll just give you like three sentences that you can say about it, and you can't talk about that issue for more than like fifteen or thirty seconds, right? Does anybody think I'm being unfair to the way politics works right now? That is it. I don't wanna do that. Here's why. This is too important. What happens if I take a plan off of a shelf and I say, "Here's my plan," and everyone's like, "That's impossible. It won't happen. Here's why. Oops." What happens if I take a plan off a shelf and I say, "Here's my plan," and everyone's like, "Okay, you can do that. It's not really gonna fix the water. Actually, this is what you should do if you wanna fix the water," right? This is an opportunity that is too important to screw it up. It's too important to just look, excuse me, to leap without looking. And so I'm doing what I did before I decided to run for state auditor. I'm doing my homework. When I prosecuted cases, I had the single most impactful decision that you can make on one person's life, whether or not to indict them for a felony, they could put them in prison, away from everyone they love. I knew that in every one of those cases, that I could be going to a jury of twelve random Iowans off the street and asking them to reach that conclusion and to say that word, guilty, that could separate somebody from everybody they love. And so I knew I needed to have those facts, I needed to know those facts, right? Upside down and backwards. Because if I was gonna make that decision, I needed to convince that jury that this was the right thing to do. I wanna have a plan where it isn't just a good plan, but one that I can speak about with enough depth that people say, "He's really thought about this. He understands it." And what he's talking about would actually be a really impactful and achievable way to address the issue. That takes time. I'll be back in Henry County next year for sure. Come back and bring fifteen friends. Yes, sir?
In politics, big money is the key. So how is it not the key for Rock Sand's campaign? A bunch of us can give twenty, fifty, a hundred, and you think, "Huh!" But that's a draw.
Sure. Well, I like donors small and big.
I understand.
Yeah. Let's talk about that. So my wife's family, when they came to Dennison, they started a creamery. That creamery grew and grew and changed into multiple different businesses. They mostly now make pet food, soup stock, and soup broth. And I think that's kind of what you're getting at, right? Happy to address it. Happy to address it. There are people who have been Republicans, but also who have thought, "I really am not really enjoying the direction of the state of Iowa anymore," right? They've been supporters of my campaign in the past, but every one of my campaigns has also had record-setting grassroots support. And that's important because it shows that people, regular people, really know me and like me. But also, my in-laws, who know me pretty well and don't even necessarily agree with me, they still wanna support me too. I think at the end of the day, this race will be someone who's got the biggest single, we already have, the biggest single list of grassroots donors that Iowa has ever seen. I'll also have my primary funders be my in-laws, who know me very well. And my opponent's probably gonna be someone whose primary funders are looking for a cut of your tax dollars. I know which one I would prefer.
Thank you.
You betcha. You had a question, I think.
I was gonna ask if you will reject all corporate PAC money?
Oh, yes, I will reject all corporate PAC money. I haven't taken it in the past, and I still won't take it.
The Department of Corrections, medical staff and mental health staff is under serious attack. A hundred-million-dollar contract on the table, which when you give that number of nine-hundred million short, it just blows my mind. But the director conveniently stopped answering questions and inquiries for about five weeks and now is out on sick leave through the announcement that's coming October fifteenth for a knee surgery. So we, as staff, don't really have a recourse for even getting our basic questions answered. I guess I'm just wondering your opinion on that situation, and I guess I'm also curious about how it got to this.
Yeah. I mean, my opinion on that situation comes back to the previous two questions about money and politics, right? If you just pay employees to do a job, you're just paying them to do a job. If you hire a big company and give them a cut, it can come back again, can't you? Can it? Does anybody think I'm being unfair here? Right? Bottom line is, this is privatization of Medicaid. It's not working. Look at our school vouchers program. The company that holds the contract to administer the program, which you could probably be paying three people sitting in a cubicle, the Department of Education in Des Moines, frankly, they could sit anywhere in Iowa, like we would let them in the auditor's office. You could probably be paying three of them benefits included a grand total of three-hundred, four-hundred thousand dollars a year to administer the program. This company is gonna get millions, millions, to run this program. And not only that, but they doubled the take of the company after they amended the program. Or, excuse me, amended the contract. So they bid it out. They gave it to this company in New York. It said, "We're gonna pay you to run this." Then a couple of months later, they amended the contract. The only thing that changed was that they added more ways for the company to get paid. They didn't add any obligations for the company. They just said, "Oh, we're gonna pay you more." This would have been a great opportunity for the state of Iowa to come out and have a press conference. They could have said, "Hey, guess what? The company that signed this contract, they wanted us to give them more money." They said, "Gee, this is gonna be harder than we thought." But a deal is a deal. And we're here to represent the people of the state of Iowa, so we told them, "Sorry, looks like we won this negotiation. You're gonna have to do what you said you'd do when you signed the contract." And we could all have gone, "Great. Thanks for sticking up for us." Instead, they signed the contract to increase their pay, and then they stonewalled the auditor's office for six months before they gave us the contract to learn what was going on. That's what's happening here. I'm not gonna do that if I'm governor. I'm sorry to see this happening right now. We'll see where it goes. They don't fill me in on any of their decision-making or their thinking on this stuff. Yes, in the back there?
We got one back here.
Oh, all right. Go ahead.
Probably the last one left.
Can you just tell me a little bit about what is happening with Ipers? There's so many different things that are going on. We're looking along the education...
Yeah. So the questions on Ipers. Number one, we have one of the best public pension programs in the country. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. Also, you know, the folks who put this together, they said, "Well, gee, you know, we just want this to be a little bit more competitive with the private sector." Everybody knows that public employees take a lower front-end salary because of the more generous benching on the back end. So don't come at me and say, "Oh, we're gonna make this more competitive with the private sector" unless you're also telling me that you're going to increase pay. Otherwise, you're just gonna have nobody signing up to do the work that taxpayers need to have done. I liked having snowplow drivers. I'm so glad that someone is teaching my sons. These are important jobs. I want people to do them. If you're just cutting the benefits, but you're not increasing the pay, then people are, fewer people are gonna sign up for it. This is clear. And I wanna emphasize too, this is one of the things that happens, these kinds of recommendations. This is what comes out of a group when everyone thinks the same way. The governor put this task force together, all members of one party, one independent, nobody from the other party. Nobody sitting in that room who was a career teacher or who was a career Department of Corrections employee. That's weird to me. If I wanted to save money in government, I'd wanna ask the people who know where the bodies are buried. There's a lot of people who do these jobs day in, day out. They see the waste and it infuriates them because they're busy, they're overworked, and if we weren't wasting that money, we could hire someone else to take a load off of them, right? Ipers, if I am your governor, is safe. We are not gonna mess with it. We are not gonna break it. We had talked about this ahead of time. Why don't you give us our last question? We had talked about your experience in education. Yeah?
I'm unsure you're addressing me or not.
No problem.
No, well, Mr. Sand, after forty-five years of education, as a teacher, coach, principal, superintendent, there's a lot of things going on about education failure. there's a lot of things going on about education failing in Iowa. We've had two governors now that say that teachers aren't doing their job. I hate to say this, but they aren't doing their job.
Yeah.
At such an emotional level, at such an attitude about education in Iowa about failing, because that's all we hear. And teachers aren't standing up, because they just do their job. And it's all right, it'll emotional about this. My question is, we need to change the attitude and emotion involved with how people treat our teachers, how they perceive them,
Yeah.
and what we do with them.
So you heard the way I talked about them when we were talking about the Ipers question? Right? Let me add to that this. My mom was a twenty-year, uh, excuse me, a twenty-year AEA employee. That was her career, working as a physical therapist for kids in northeast Iowa. Right? And so she would drive around. I remember the day that she got the big car phone with the giant magnet that goes on. Because we got a lot of hills in northeast Iowa. And if she was coming home late, and it was January, and it was dark at four-thirty, boy, it made us feel better to know that if she was in the ditch somewhere, she could call somebody. These are people who put their lives into serving other people. My mom would come home some days. She'd come in the front door, I have this image of her, before I was nine years old. It was in the first house that we grew up in. She came in, "My kid learned to walk today." And she was just as proud of that kid as she would have been as if it was me or my sister. Because these are people who day in, day out, they're not getting rich off of doing it, but they're doing work that they find meaningful, because they know they're making a difference in the lives of other people. This is Mrs. Jorgensen, my high school history teacher. This is Mr. Berlin, our biology teacher, the just one Conservation Teacher of the Year. Right? This is Mrs. Clausen, my first grade teacher. All these people, they care about Iowans. And I'm sick and tired of having state government run entirely by people who do things like, call them sinister. It's wrong. And my answer, my answer to the people who say, "Well, do you know what's going on in our public schools?" is, "Do you? You should go in. Why don't you go volunteer? Why don't you go help out? Why don't you go sit in a classroom for a day and see what's going on in there?"
Talk to my daughter.
Talk to your daughter.
She's special education.
Oh, God bless her.
In Des Moines, and she, part of, part of what she is worried about is she's got a, you know, she's got a fairly good job. She's got good benefits.
Yeah.
But it's kind of like, you're not doing enough. And, you know, she's afraid that she's someday gonna get fired because she's that left behind child.
There's too, too many people who aren't getting the support they need in Iowa's public school system. Period. Okay? I'm gonna be working with people who might be the same people. Well, I guess the guy that called them sinister didn't win his reelection race, so it won't be him. And JB motioned to me here that we gotta, did we start this one? Are we at an hour right now?
Yeah, it's gonna take a while.
Okay, okay. So we're gonna wrap it up. Appreciate the question. I hope you get to understand where I'm coming from on that. If you're ready for change in the state of Iowa, if you want to help me flip some tables, great. We need some help. I can't do it by myself. I know that we can win this race. How do I know it? Well, number one, I have won twice before. So that's a pretty good piece of evidence right there. But here's number two. It's not about me. It's actually about this mission of this campaign, this message, not redder or bluer, but better and truer. Because we keep hearing it echo back to us from the most unlikely places in the state of Iowa. A guy who came up to me in a mall said, "I've never registered to vote before. I'm gonna register to vote for you. I was just watching YouTube videos about you this morning." "Wow, thank you. What did you hear or see that made you decide to do that?" The idea that we should be bigger than Democrats versus Republicans. We all know this. We all know this. It's in every one of our hearts. And yet, we are stuck in this stupid two-choice system that tries to push us the other direction. We also, there was an op-ed that appeared in the Marshalltown newspaper a couple of months ago. Guy who says, "I agree with Republicans on a bunch of stuff. I agree with Democrats on a bunch of stuff. I am sick of pretending that there's only two ways to think." We have to have a system where we can actually acknowledge that. And I've had enough of leaders who preach unity and practice division. And I'm ready to just give up. But I'm really encouraged by the beginning of this campaign for governor, because they are talking about these issues in a way that makes it clear that they take them seriously and they want to do something about it. Right? To have that op-ed appear fifteen months before Election Day from a guy you didn't even know liked you is amazing. But folks, the man that wrote that op-ed has been in the cabinet for Iowa Governor Kim Reynolds. He was recommended for that job by United States Senator Joni Ernst. So there are people who have never voted. They have, not because, just because they've never heard the message. He was watching YouTube videos about his state auditor. All right? It's not that he wasn't informed. He just needed to hear what he already knew was true. Same with Matthew Peterson. So whether you're Tristan, a non-voter, or Matthew Peterson, who's run the Iowa Veterans Home, these are people who heard this message one time and they said, "Sign me up. I'm ready. Let's go. This is what we need in the state of Iowa. Not redder or bluer, but better and truer." We need your help to reach people in every piece of our state, from every political walk, with that message, because there's so many out there that are ready to hear it. What do we need you to do? Three things. Number one, volunteer. Like JB was saying when we were starting, we need people to knock doors, make phone calls, send text messages. There's lots of ways to help. You can sign up right here, or you can sign up at rob sand dot com. Number two, we need you to donate. If you've donated before, thank you. You may now donate again. We are very, very, very careful with every donation that we give. We put it to good use. Number three, follow me on social media. Whatever social media channels you use, follow me. And when you see my posts, hit the like button, but also, more importantly, hit the share button, so that other people who know you, but who don't know me, can get a chance to get to know me. The posts, sometimes they're political.